Greetings, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome back to another study station video. This time around, we're going to be doing financial management for business one oh six. This if you ignore the anime character, that's just copy, that's just um clickbait. I'll be going over the homework assignments and then the practice quizzes. So the first video is going to be homework assignments four and five. Let's start with question one. The way these are going to work is I'll have the notepad here and write out which questions it is. In this case, the questions we need is this one. P E ratio's favorite candy stock is expected to earn two dollars and forty cents per share this year. Its P E ratio is eighteen. What is the stock price? The formulas that you're going to need are the price earnings ratio equals to market price per share divided by earnings per share. And the market price per share equals the price earnings ratio multiplied by the earnings per share. With now that you know both formulas, let's begin. First, we need to know what we know. Just pick a good color. Hmm, I'll say white green is fine. I'm okay with that. What we know? Why is it doing that? What we know is this, that the P E is equal to eighteen. Not really sure what's causing that, but I don't know how to fix that. And we also know that the earnings per share, E P S, is equal to two dollars and forty cents. You know what? Give me a second. I'm gonna edit this out. Stock conversion. That should probably cause less issues. Okay. So we know with this, which means that in order to solve for the stock price, we're going to need eighteen multiplied by two dollars and forty cents. We know that eighteen is the ratio, so the H, the P E, the price earnings ratio. Meaning that we can just keep it as eighteen and this is dollars, which gives us a four, three, two, the forty-three dollars and twenty cent stock price. And that's how you solve this one. Erase all ink. Onto the second question. It's this one. Control, copy. And I forgot to get part B. We're going to need a lot of formulas here. As this question is rather long, but at the end of the day, once we finish the question, it'll all make sense. At least that's the idea behind it. And if it doesn't make sense, then that's my fault. Not yours. So please, if you have any questions, send, send me the questions and I'll probably answer them for you. And if you don't have any questions and you understand this, then that's perfect. That's exactly what I want to see, what I want to see. I don't want any other outcome. I'd, I'd rather you understand the question. So this question is separated into five parts. A dividend discount model integrated potato chips just paid a one dollar per share dividend. You expect the dividend to grow steadily at a rate of four percent per year. A expand dividend in each of the next three years. My apologies, expected dividend. B, if discount rate for stock is twelve percent, at what price will the stock sell? What is the expected stock price three years from now? If you buy the stock and plan to sell it three years from now, what are your expected cash flows in years one, year two, and year three? And E, what is the present value of the stream of payments you found in part D? Compare your answer to part B. So let's look at part A. In part A, the formula for part A that you're going to need is this one. You're going to need expected dividend is equal to the share dividend paid multiplied by the growth rate. So let's do that. Let's show that off right now. So we know in year one. Year one. It's going to be one multiplied by one point zero four. And we know it's zero four because it's given to us that it's just grows steadily at a rate of four percent per year. And we know that this is equal to one dollar and four cents. For year two, we're going to get one dollar and four cents. And we just write the things here so you can tell, multiplied by the growth rate, which is going to be one point zero four. I'm not sure what to do about the flickering. That bothers you? I'm so sorry. And that'll give us one dollar, zero, eight, eight, one, three, or approximately a dollar and eight cents. Good. And then for year three, and just to show off my trilingualism. Even though this should be in front, but who cares? Uh, it'll be, we're going to use the full one because when you use decimals, you really want to. Okay, seriously, this is now getting in the way of writing the numbers. This is, okay, the one point zero eight, one, three. Here, which is good, multiplied by one point zero four, which will give us one point zero two, four, six, eight. Great. I believe that's what we need to do. Okay, so let me turn this off. This is getting annoying. That should probably help as well. Six, not eight, six. Okay, so that doesn't do anything. Four. Which is equal to one dollar and twelve cents. And those are the calculations at the next three years. Good. Clear all the ink now. And now let's look at B. Let me get my notepad open. If discount rate for stock is twelve percent, at what price will the stock sell? For this one, we're going to need this formula here. Control, copy, control paste. The stock price per year, the stock price is equal to year one expected dividend divided by discount rate growth. We know that the year one expected dividend from the last section was one point zero four. Meaning that the stock price is equal to one point zero four. That looks like a six. Let me get rid of it. Zero, four, divided by in parentheses, zero point one, two, minus zero point zero four. The one, two comes from the question itself. Wherein it says, uh, discount rate of stock is twelve percent. And the zero point zero four comes from the fact that it is growing steadily at a rate of four percent. And the one point zero four comes from multiplying one times one point zero four in the question. If you add these together, that'll give you thirteen dollars. And that is your stock price. Onto the next section of the question. C, what is the expected stock price three years from now? We know that this formula can be, this question can be solved with this formula. Stock price in X years is equal to the stock price today multiplied by one plus the growth rate time to the power of years. It should be like that. In practice, what that looks like is this. You know what? Let's use a this glitch line. I don't even know why I keep trying to shoot it. So looking at it realistically, we all know that it's thirteen. That's starting to get in the way of my own writing. Thirteen multiplied by one plus, and we know the number is going to be zero point zero four. Parenthesis is equal to thirteen dollars. Oh, no, it's not equal to thirteen dollars. To the power of three is equal to fourteen point six, two, three, two, three, six. Now allow me to fix that because I don't know what's causing the screen to glitch this badly. Okay, it'll be six, two, three, two, and then three, two. Okay, which is equal to, or approximately fourteen dollars and sixty-two cents. Clearing all ink. Let's look at D for a second. If you buy the stock and plan to sell it three years from now, what are your expected cash flows in years one, two, and three? Here's the thing with this one. You already know that the expected cash flows are from the last question from section B. No, from section A, which are one point zero four, one point zero eight, and one point one, two. And these are in dollars. So in E, when asked for the present value for the stream of payments we found in part D, the, they're equal, so the found, what you find in your stream of payments for part D, you find that looking at A, you get that their numbers are equal. And so part B, you know that stock price year one expected dividend will be the same. They're both going to be equal to thirteen. And that's just so if you guys look at the question, present value of your stream payments found in part D, compare your answer to part B. So the stream of payments in part D are the same as the ones in part A. So when you get them in part B, you'll know that you're using the same formula again, which means that they're equal to thirteen. And that's the end of that question. Let's look at question two. Yes, this is going to be quite a long video this guys. And that question is seventeen point seventeen. Control, copy, control paste. And let's get rid of the top section. So yet you're not distracted by it. A constant growth model, Eastern Electric currently pays a dividend of one dollar and sixty-four cents per share and sells for twenty-seven dollars a share. If investors believe the growth rate of dividends is thirteen, is three percent per year, what rate of return do they expect to earn on their stock? We know that the formula to solve this is, why is it doing that? P of zero is equal to D I V of zero multiplied by one plus G power of N in time or payments divided by R minus G. Now that we know this formula, let's do some math. It's going to be, the dividend will be like this. One point six four multiplied by one plus zero three. And you remember you get the zero three from the fact that you believe that the growth rate of the dividend is three percent per year. And then because we're doing one year, N is equal to one, divided by R, which in this case, we don't know, minus G. And in this case, G is equal to zero point zero three. There should be a point here. What I'll do here is I'm using the T I inspire CX by Cass and that, and that has a solve function. If you don't have a solve function, you can do it by hand. But if you're on day, if you're just looking for R and you know how to solve for R, and you'll know that R is going to equal zero point zero nine, two, five, six. Or nine point two, five, six percent. Let's look at part B. If the investors required rate of return is ten percent, what must the great, the growth rate they expect of the firm? What must be the growth rate they expect from the firm? In order to answer that one, we need to use this formula again. Except now, we're looking for G. It'll be twenty-seven is equal to one point six four. Wow, that was really bad writing. One point six four times one plus G, which is our growth rate, times, times one, because it's still one year, I mean to the power of one, divided by open parenthesis, zero point one, minus G. Fun, no? You can plug it into a calculator. You can solve for G. I just need you to know how to set this up so that when you do plug it in, you'll get that G is equal to zero point zero three, seven. Or G is equal to three point seven percent. Happy? Good. Let's, let's get rid of this side. You only need to get rid of this side for now. The rest will be made clear once we do that. I didn't realize how much of this was just dots on the screen. It's kind of funny. Wait, we're gonna do a nice little red here so that we can discern from which side is which. Let's move on to section C, which on the notepad is here. If the sustainable growth rate is five percent and the pullback ratio is zero point four, what must be the rate of return earned by the firm on its new investments? What we need is the growth rate formula. We know that the growth rate is equal to the return on equity, so RO divided by the flowback ratio. And we know that RO is equal to the growth rate divided by the flowback ratio. But in this case, what we need to find is the rate of return, correct? Yes, 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 yes. What must be the rate of return? In other words, we need to find the rate of return. Which is in other words, is RO. In this case, we'll know it'll be zero point zero five, because it was given that the sustainable growth rate is five percent, divided by zero point four. Zero point four, because we know the flowback ratio is zero point four. And that'll give us zero point one, two, five. Or if you want to do it with percentages, it'll be twelve point five percent. And that is how you get the rate of return that must be earned by the firm on its new investment. Unique, no? At least, I do think so. So let's look onto question twenty. Let's look at question three. I know these questions are a bit long, but bear with me. You'll get the gist of it soon enough. Okay, so this question has a lot of parts as well. Control, copy, control, paste. Dividend discount model, consider the following three stocks. Stock A is expected to provide a dividend of ten dollars a share forever. Stock B is expected to pay a dividend of five dollars next year. Thereafter, dividend growth is expected to be four percent a year forever. And C, stock C is expected to pay a dividend of five dollars next year. Thereafter, dividend growth is expected to be twenty percent a year for five years, i.e. years two through six and zero thereafter. If the market capitalization rate for each stock is ten percent, which stock is the most valuable? What if the capitalization rate is seven percent? This question requires us to do six formulas. Let's look at stock A first. Stock A requires, is said that it's going to be an expected, is expected to provide a dividend of ten dollars a share forever. So it's the most simple one, thus making it the easiest one to know. What do we know? We know that P of zero is that, we know that P of zero is equal to the current stock price, current stock price. We know that D I V is equal to the dividend. We know that P of H is the terminal value or the horizon stock price, and we know that R is the rate of return. Now that we know that, this should be a lot easier to solve. At least, I like to think it'll be a lot easier to solve. Once again, if you have any questions, please post them in the comments. So for a formula, so for, let's look at stock A. We know it'll be ten, because that is what it is, divided by zero point one, because it is forever. And that's also because it'll be ten percent is the capitalization rate, which is equal to a hundred dollars. This is the stock A value at ten percent, hundred dollars. So let's look at it at seven percent. It'll be ten divided by zero point zero seven, which is equal to zero, open, uh, dollar sign, hundred and forty-two dollars and eighty-two cents. This is the stock price of A. It's the value anyways, at seven percent. Excellent. Okay, now let's look at stock B. For B, it's going to be a bit of a different formula. For this one, what we used was P of zero is equal to dividend one divided by the rate. But in this case, we need dividend one divided by the rate minus the growth, because this one's a bit bigger. Is this G fine, or would you rather I write it like this? It's up to you. Let me know for future episodes. So in the case of the stock B, we know that it's five because it pays a dividend of five next year divided by the rate, and we know the rate is ten percent or zero point one, minus, and we know that it is expected to grow at a rate of four percent forever, zero point zero four. What this gives us is this beautiful number, which is eighty-three point thirty-three dollars. And that is the stock value, stock B value at ten percent. What we need now is the stock B value at seven percent. And to get that done, we are going to need this side again. Once again, I want to say this before. If you are following along, I recommend you have a pen and paper out so that you can follow the steps. Or you could just listen to this if you're in a rush, but I don't think you're gonna get as much out of it unless you write it down and feel the process out yourself. If you don't, if you can feel the process out, trust me, everything is much better. So let's do it for the stock price at seven percent. So it'll be once more, five divided by zero point zero seven, minus zero point zero four, plus parenthesis. And this will equal to opening, no, dollar sign, hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents. And that is the stock B value at seven percent or zero point zero seven. Good. That was the easy part, ladies and gentlemen. Time to get to the really hard one. And that would be the infamous stock C. It's expected to pay a dividend of five dollars next year. Thereafter, the dividend growth is expected to be twenty percent a year for five years, i.e. years two through six and zero thereafter. Now that you know that, you can take a photo of this, you can screenshot it or something else. Just make sure that if you want to look at it, let's do this. Let's look at it this way. We know that D I V one, which I will, is equal to five dollars, because it said so. Good. Now we need to know D I V two. That's just five multiplied by one plus zero point two, because it's twenty percent, which is equal to six dollars. For D I V three, we're going to need six times one point two, because at this point, you don't want to see me write the whole thing over and over again. And that'll be equal to seven point two. Good. And then for D I V four, we're going to get seven point two multiplied by one point two, and that'll give us eight point six four. Yay. For D I V five, we're going to need eight point six four multiplied by one point two. And that'll give us ten point three, six, eight. From here, we need D I V six, which is equal to ten point three, six, eight. In parentheses, one point two, which in turn is twelve point four, four, one, six. And then of course, we need D I V seven, which is going to be twelve point four, four, one, six. Good? Because, and that's not it, by the way. D I V seven is this times one point two, just seeing it. Actually, no, it's one point zero, one plus zero. And the reason it's zero is because it's zero percent thereafter, which is just equal to, now if I write it down, twelve dollars and forty-four cents. Keep this number memorized, or I'll just write it down in a little bit. Erase all ink. Highlight, not highlight. Red, here, that's really bad. I wish I could get it straight, but sometimes it just isn't in the cards. So we know that seven, D I V seven is equal to twelve point four, four, one, six. Good. Now this is where we get the stock price for P six is equal. Now that we have that, we need the stock price. Stock price of P six of P six is equal to D I V seven divided by the market capitalization rate. Excellent. Which in turn means that it's going to be twelve point four, four, one, six divided by zero point one, which in turn is give us twelve, hundred and twenty-four point four, one, six. Okay, now that we have this number memorized and known, we can start the super formula. Remember the numbers we got last time? Let's plug them in. There'll be five over one plus point one to the power of one, plus six over one plus point one to the power of two, plus seven point two over, it should be a two, not a three, sorry. Good. One plus point one to the power of three plus and the plus will give us eight point six four over one plus point one to the power of four. And that'll be plus ten, three, six, eight over one plus point one to the power of five plus twelve point four, four, one, six over one plus point one to the power of five. Plus, and then we take this number here, which is one, two, four, point four, one, six over, open parenthesis, one plus zero point one to the power of six. Oops, this five here should be a six. Yes, because, because it is zero. Yes, because, because it is zero thereafter, it would be six. What you'll do here, after all this, is plug it into a calculator, and your little calculator friend is going to tell you that you get the number, you get this number right here. You get. Why does the screen keep flickering? That's the worst. And I'm writing in green because it's money. A hundred and four dollars fifty-one cents. And that is stock C value at ten percent. Up next, we need to get the stock C value at seven percent, as we've been doing. So what we do here is simple. We delete, we delete the ones like so, and then treat them as zero seven. And we'll do this for all of them. That's why I didn't just combine them. Once you plug, once you do all these for zero seven, and you plug them into a calculator, you get this number. And that number is oh, my apologies. Before that, this number needs to be different. So before I can do that, I need to change this number. And you'll get this changed number by doing the same step we did last time. And that step was, you take one two point four four one six divided by, now instead of point one, you're gonna be divided by zero point zero seven. And that number is going to be one seven seven point through seven three seven one four. That's what you get from here. So now we can plug this into a calculator. I almost made a mistake. Thankfully, this is why you plug things in, so that you don't make, so that you can check your work. And once you have all of this set up, you'll get this number right here. A hundred and fifty-six dollars and fifty cents. And this is the stock C value at seven percent. Now, we need to get to the second section, the section part of the question. The second part of the question asked this. Okay, second part of the question was, if the market capitalization rate is ten percent, what is the most valuable stock in a seven percent, what is the most valuable stock? We know that at ten percent, and then at seven percent, we know that this was stock C, because it had the highest number, you see. And then at seven percent, the highest stock value was stock B. You can go back into the video and confirm, but those were the highest numbers. Thus being the most valuable stock. Good. I think that makes sense. Up next, we get the next question. Let's pull it up. This is another long one. Wow, this is a really long one. Control copy? Nah, it's not really that long. This one's actually shorter than the previous one. Here's this one. Non-constant growth. Tattletale News Corporation has been growing at a rate of twenty percent per year, and you expect this growth rate in earnings and dividends to continue for another three years. If the last dividend paid was two dollars, what will the next dividend be? And B, if the discount rate is fifteen percent, and the steady growth rate after three years is four percent, what should be the stock price today? Let's do some math. So for step A, what do we know? Let's see here. We know that D one is equal to two point four. You know that D two is equal to two point four multiplied by one point two. Oops, that's part, this is part B. We need to do part A first. I was about to start doing part A. Part B. That would have been really bad. So part A, we know that D zero is equals two. And how do we know that? Well, because it's given in the problem. If the last dividend was two dollars, then what will the next dividend be? Well, we know that it's operating at a discount rate of fifteen percent, growing at a study for three years, and then at four percent, oh my god, why do I keep reading for B? My bad. It's been growing at a rate of twenty percent per year. And we know that if it's twenty percent per year, D one is equal to two times one plus twenty percent, which is zero point two. And that is equal to two dollars and forty cents. This is the next dividend. Now let's do part B, because I keep wanting to do part B. If the discount rate is fifteen percent, and the steady growth rate after three years is four percent, what should be the stock price today? Well, let's see. What do we know? We know that D one is equal to two point four. We know that D two is equal to two point eight eight. And how do we get two point eight eight? Just so you guys know, and you'll do this consistently, is you'll take two point four multiplied by one point two. That will equal this. And applying that train of logic, we can do it for D three, which is equal to two point eight eight times one point two, which is three point four five six. We also know that the discount rate, so let's delete this side really quickly. That way you has, can have enough time to catch up and write the line. Sorry about this. We know the discount rate is equal to zero point one five, and the growth rate is equal to zero point zero four. Let's, let's fix these zeros up, because that was a bad zero. Zero point zero four. Good. So now let's do some math. We need to get the discount rate after three years, because it'll grow safely for three years, which is stock B today. So we know that D three is equal to one plus G divided by R minus G. Oh, my bad. It's not that it's equal to. To solve it, it's D three multiplied by this, no, by this. Good. Good. So in order to do that mathematically, we'll just take this side over and move it away, for now. We'll come back to this. So let's do this the good old fashioned way. After we plug in the numbers, we'll get three point four five six times one point zero four, because it is a four percent growth, divided by the rate, which is fifteen, so zero point one five minus zero point zero four. You plug this into a handy dandy calculator, and you'll get thirty-two point six seven. Now that we have this number, it's time for the super formula, again. Why does this class really like using the super formula? I have no idea. But it's his class. You gotta, you gotta, we have to respect the professor. After all, he's the one who gives us our grade. We'll get two point four, and if you're confused, or get the two point four, just know that's D one. One point one five. One point one five comes from the fact that the discount rate is fifteen percent to the power of one, plus two point eight eight divided by one point one five to the power of two, plus three point four five six divided by one point one five three. I just realized I have a little error here. Let's move that. Perfect. Plus three two point six seven, which we got from here, divided by one point one five to the power of three. Again, it's three because it's the same, because it's the same year. We plug this into a calculator, and we get this. Twenty-eight dollars and two cents. That is every single question for practice homework assignment number two. Meaning number, no, seven two, homework assignment four. Thank you guys so much for watching. I'll be posting homework assignment five. And then after that, I'll be doing the formula review. And in the formula review year, I'm going to be doing some practice quiz questions. I want to thank you all so much for watching, and I hope you all enjoyed.